Buenas, then, good morning. I'm Nina Trintaisai, and I'm here to turn in Guam. It's back in session. We're back from recess. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the rules, I move to go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the rules, I move to accept and append to the Journal all committee reports submitted since December 16, 2022 through January 2, 2023 to the Committee on Rules prior, and that those be uploaded to the website.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga, Haagen, Guam, I move to act on vetoed Bill Number 291-36 LS, which is an act adding new chapter 91B to Division 4 of Title 10 of the Guam Code annotated relative to abortion, including abortions after detection of a child's heartbeat, and authorizing a private civil right of action.
On that motion, you may proceed to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just like to move it for voting.
On that motion, notwithstanding the governor's veto to place vetoed Bill Number 291-36 in the voting file for override, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still in motion. Are there any other motions? If not, then we have no legislative concurrences. There are no items under consent calendar or second reading. We proceed to the voting file. Colleagues, we are on the voting file with one item, that is vetoed Bill Number 291-36. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 291-36 LS, an act to add a new chapter 91B to Division 4 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated relative to abortion, including abortions after detection of an unborn child's heartbeat, and authorizing a private civil right of action.
The question before you is, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga, Haagen, Guam, shall vetoed Bill Number 291-36 LS be overridden? Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make the motion to excuse members not present today.
On the motion to excuse members not present today from voting, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, excused. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidogui. Senator Tidogui, aye. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, nay. Speaker Terlahey, nay. Senator Torres.
Vetoed Bill Number 291-36 LS has failed override. There are no other items on the voting file. We are now going to proceed to brief extension of remarks. Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I make a few remarks, under extemporaneous remarks and an extension, I would like to request that we all rise for a moment of silence in recognition of Roy, Senator Roy Polino Duñez, who is having his services today. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Condolences to his family, and thank you for the remarks that you made, Madam Speaker, in your extension from the legislature. Condolences to the family. Roy is my cousin, and I not only admired him because of the fact that he was, as mentioned, one of the first senators from the South to be elected to this body many years ago, but there's another reason why I have a closeness to him. And many in this hall may know, many may not, many listening may not, but Roy Duñez was an excellent fisherman. He also was, of course, a merchant marine, had attended merchant marine school, and so that's kind of my closeness to him in terms of love of the water, the sea, and particularly fishing. Roy Duñez was not just a great fisherman, but he was a fisherman that was really well-known for consistently catching very large yellowfin. That is a prized fish, as many of you may know, and so that's why he was well noted for being a fisherman. But particularly, if you wanted yellowfin, you waited for Roy to come home from his fishing trip. Rest in peace, my prime minister. Madam Speaker, first of all, I want to thank every single member of the staff of this legislature. They have been exemplary in terms of carrying out their duties. All the attachees, our legal counsel. This is now my third term in the legislature, and I have to say that this staff is really had set a standard, in my opinion. They're very, very efficient. They work really well, and this has been a contentious legislature, so they put up with people like me. So I want to say thank you very much. I hope you had a Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a wonderful new year, and we see all your faces again in the new year. Madam Speaker, I have to say that despite the differences that we may have had on this floor during this session, I maintain and will always maintain the highest regard for every member of this body. I believe that everyone came forth to proffer legislation and to support or not support legislation based on their fundamental beliefs and what they promised the people of Guam that they would do on this floor. Like I said, while we may have differences in those areas, I respect the fact that they expressed those views and followed through on what they told the people of Guam they would be doing. So for those who are departing, I want to say thank you very much for your service. Thank you for aspiring to higher service, and thank you also if you've decided just simply not to run during this term to pay attention to other details. In closing, Madam Speaker, I know this is always dangerous to start mentioning individuals. I didn't want to do it, but actually, I do want to do it, but I didn't want to offend anybody else that I'm not going to mention, but I'm doing this for a very special reason, and that is unfortunately, the override did not happen on Bill 291-36. But I want to say that in the three terms that I served and the hundreds of bills that I've debated over, voted for or didn't vote for, overrides that I voted for or didn't vote for. Bill 291-36 was a bill that required absolute steadfastness, regardless of what side you were on. And the bottom line is that this is not just returning the favor, because I would have said this anyways, had she not made such wonderful remarks about myself. But Senator Nelson has displayed a very, very well-regarded quality that people look for in legislators, and that is she endured the raths and the storms of a very, very, very contentious piece of legislation. It came at high cost. I know that because she shared with me personally the costs. But as she said in the paper today, and as she said many times, she simply will not give up on her fight for the right to life. I share that belief, not just simply for my religious beliefs, but just for the beliefs and the fundamentals of life. I admire Senator Nelson for that tenacity, and as Senator Ada said, you have not seen the last of him, and I'm sure we have not seen the last of Senator Nelson. I bid you all a wonderful, once again belated Christmas, and a happy new year. And to the people of Guam, thank you once again for giving me the distinct honor of being able to return to the 37th Guam Legislature. May God bless Guam. God bless America, and may everybody be safe in this coming new year. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Pito, you may, Senator Jose Pito Terlahey, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, buenas. Paragu. Zanabe filutamorosai, gimbapushlan simana fumne engliso. Zanabe poma tuonitauta, upraktika stifilutamor. Saman hungezu, guinigi tautauta, niban mafanaguetadistiantis. Tu bensona, toru zisi ban empleaupar legislature, or handutari de clerk. Toru hamdu ni manazudanti guinigi legislature, undankulu na sisus masi, gini guahu, gidi sagahu zadi familia. Tatuwa, giman mapushana tempo, na guaha gijaita, tiban parehu nasota, zangien paratabota, masiafa na bio. Lo tatuwa, na guasiya influense, gini sanhizong, zan guaha naboye, na atulaike nasota. Zajuda, toru zisi ai, quentus ni masasangan, laci padiransi. Unai amzu, dankulu na creditu, nisani dot, sem fatirasina sunmizu, hafa melagumizu na pimbotah. Zanabe isangan, na guaha, na tiban akumpirid, guini, lo lusutemurs, man agutikanai, som mapelewu, iningeta. Zainangeta, Madam Speaker, ezige, namangaigihid, guini, kumusani dot, iparataspien, penyu, paratadzule tautauta, patakurihi kanamia, patadaguaha dipushia dilatu, guini, gitanota. Zanabe inai, toru zisi ni dot, namangaigihid, guini, na dia, zan eziti man taigui. Dankulu na sisus masi, sa masia guaha, na tiparehu, inasota, gi anman mabotet, lo parehu inasota, saman haguezai toru. Zastea besangan, tiutugu manu zu guatu, sa intiguan, na tiu fatiras, eleksion. Lo besangan, na zanabe inai, toru tautauta, iisla. Dankulu na sisus masi, diapurtiridan, imanaizu, pa beisidbi, hamzu, gi kautroanis la tempo. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Senator. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Good morning, Honorable Speaker, honorable and esteemed colleagues. We all are aware of the honor bestowed on us by our people by electing us to this august body. For some, public service is a calling, a call to action on behalf of our people. Whether we come from a family of public servants or just felt the need to change government policy or direction, we came here to do the people's work. Our island's needs seem endless, but meeting those needs is rewarding and satisfying. Truly serving our people is the best work of life. I am grateful to have served alongside you as we strive to improve the lives of our people of Guam. I want to commend the legislature's leadership and staff for quickly adjusting processes and procedures to allow for continued operations of the legislature during the COVID pandemic. I suggest that this process of assessment and updating be permanent. The legislature must modernize to be more responsive to the needs of both its members and those we serve. For many years, our government, the legislature included, has been expected to do more with fewer resources. While this is a great, worthy goal that should always be pursued, certain improvements can be made only with adequate investment. I urge the leadership of the 37th Guam Legislature to consider this expense as a necessary part of its operations. Madam Speaker and colleagues, thank you for facing the challenges before us and for the progress made toward a better community. We know that we are privileged to be a member of this body, and we know as well that being a senator is not a position of privilege, it is not a position of power. But collectively as a body, the legislature can do powerful things for our people. The legislature must look critically at the issues and the changes, the challenges being faced by government entities, and go beyond funding their operations. The legislature must appraise the performance of the entire government and be more assertive and effective when conducting oversight. I am thankful that the people of Guam afforded me the opportunity to serve them as a member of the 36th Guam Legislature. I am thankful that you, my colleagues, supported the initiative I put forth and have been open and receptive to my input. We have not always agreed, but I am grateful that for the most part, we have been able to agree or disagree agreeably. To my office team, thank you for your support and that all you have done to ensure that our office was running smoothly and effectively, for the legislations that we put before the people of Guam, both from our office and the constituents who walk through our doors. To my children and my grandson, thank you for your unending support. You guys have always been with me. Whether we agreed or disagreed, you were always there to support me. To my loving wife Annette, thank you for always being by my side to support me in working for the people of Guam. Without you, it would have been much more difficult without your support, without your love. There's always the joke out there, you know, you always get two for the price of one, you know? Annette and I, she was my tag team. I love you forever. As I say farewell to you, my colleagues, I do so with a grateful heart. The great things about this hall is that each member brings their unique experiences to the table and advocates for causes we believe in. I've endeavored to do so. My outlook for Guam remains positive. I leave this body filled with hope that the 37th Guam Legislature will do more for our people, for those who visit our island, for those who call Guam home, and working together with our military partners to ensure that Guam becomes a viable place so that everyone can continue to call Guam home, and those that are off island that want to return home will see the bright future that our island has. I thank all of you so very much for all your time, for your patience, for being together, even though sometimes we weren't together. Thank you all. God bless you all, and God bless Guam.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized for extension of remarks? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, it's always interesting when you serve a term how quickly it can go by, and I've certainly had a few of them here at the Guam Legislature and the opportunity to serve with a number of colleagues. I am, as we all are, very grateful for the opportunity our people have provided us to come into this session hall and serve on their behalf and help make decisions on their behalf. And I think that's something we always need to be reminded about, is that where our power comes from, and it's not ours. I mean, it's ours temporarily to hopefully make better decisions to improve our community. You know, Madam Speaker, when I made the decision to run after so many years of not being in this hall, because I pretty much thought, you know, after my first round, that that would be it, that I would have, I've had such a wonderful opportunity that the people of Guam have given me to serve six consecutive terms in the Guam Legislature from the time I was in my twenties to my early forties, and I never thought I'd come back again. But when I decided to, and the people gave me the opportunity, you know, I felt very much my role here, as I encourage many of our colleagues that have stood up, is to ensure a check and balance in government, to ensure accountability of all elected officials, to ensure our public officials that are working are working on behalf of the interests of the community that we were here to serve. I really believe that, and all these years later, I still believe that is what our role and our responsibility is to be here. It's not to be here to serve our surf interests, it's not to be here to serve our family's interest or our friends, and sometimes that's not always the case, and it's unfortunate. But at least for me, that's always been my priority, you know, because public service, as you know, my good colleague Senator Ada, you know, when we talk about and appreciate the friends and especially our family, that put up with an awful lot when we're in public life, to be there to support us, especially at times when we need to be there, and we're not, because we have obligations here at work that take us away, or evenings that take us away at times when we need to be there. If it wasn't for their support, certainly in my case, I wouldn't be able to do what I do. I wouldn't have the foundation that I have to speak my mind, to stand and be strong for the things that I believe in and that I advocate for. That's where my power comes from. It comes from them, it comes from my faith in God, and the work that I hope that I'm doing in the interest of this community, because I love Guam so much. It's home, something my grandfather imparted at me when I was very young, and I appreciate that. I look to him, even though he's certainly no longer here with me, at least not in the physical sense, but he's given me such incredible conviction, and that's what gives me the strength to speak and stand up and be strong for what's important. And I appreciate the opportunity also that our people are giving me to serve in the incoming legislature. I hope we all continue to do good work. I'm sure our colleagues that are not continuing on with us in their own life will continue to do good things for our community, and I certainly wish them well, and I hope for the best in the incoming year. I mean, we've had so many challenges in our community, and there's still so many things we need to address. You know, while we have so much more in the material world, you know, our personal safety, the quality of our education for our children, the future, you know, it's not as clear, and that's concerning. I certainly hope that we in the incoming legislature will make even better decisions because the challenges are going to be greater, and we need, in order to be leaders, to think beyond today, to make decisions in the immediacy of what's around us, because we're worried, oh, gosh, are we going to be popular? Are we going to get elected? Are we not going to get elected? And ensure that we're making better decisions and strengthening a better foundation for our people, because the challenges ahead are even greater, and sometimes we have to make decisions that are not in the immediate time popular, but long-term are actually in the best interests of our community. I'd like to thank my colleagues. I've not always agreed with all of you. You've not always agreed with all of me, but that's part of the debate. That's why we're here. I mean, if we all agreed all the time, we'd have to wonder if we're really, we're really doing the right thing for our community, because hopefully out of the debate and the challenges that come with that, hopefully the ultimate decisions are the better decisions for our community. And I too would also like to thank our staff here at the Guam Legislature, who's been very gracious in taking care of us during our time here. Certainly wish them and their families well, all my colleagues and the people of Guam. I think we're always hopeful with every new year that it's a time for renewal, it's a time to start a clean slate, and hopefully do better, and hopefully be better, healthily be, healthier in terms of our bodies and our minds, and I know we all wish for the betterment of our island and our families out there. So I wish everyone well in the upcoming new year and wish all my colleagues well, and thank you also, more importantly, to our people for giving us the opportunity to serve. Most deeply appreciated. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to provide these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized for extension of remarks? Senator Nelson, you are, Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, you know, this is just, just wanted to say thank you first to God and to my family. This will be the upbridge version from our previous session, but just those that really helped carry Bill 291 forward, being very supportive, keeping the peace, most especially during the most adversarial times that we see, that I've ever seen, and really just being prayerful for this whole year. And so I'd like to thank those that helped me shoulder this piece of legislation, and that's Senator Duñez, Senator Shelton, Senator Ada, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Telo Tidogui, Senator Joanne Brown, Mayor Jesse Alec, Mayor Savaris, Mayor Louise Rivera, Dr. Shea, Dr. De Benedictus, Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Carrera, Dr. Gabel, the various face, most especially Harvest House. I thank you for the hard work that you do, Bethany, and your team there, and thank you for really giving yourself to our island's children. Island Hope Guam, the Republican Party of Guam, who also put out a letter of support for this legislation, the Regalo Foundation, Safe Haven Pregnancy Center, Attorney Jackie Terlahey, and last but not least, definitely not least, Attorney Peter Scrow. You know, during this journey, trying to advocate for life against ACLU, against Planned Parenthood coming to Guam, they really stood by the, they really stood by defending life. Also, the Guam Freedom Coalition. I met a lot of great people. I got to experience the commitment that they have to our community, to protect our children, to ensure they have a safe home, to help mothers who are going through difficulties to ensure they have a safe home, to help mothers who are going through difficult pregnancies, difficult situation in their lives, helping them to see through that dark area of their life. And so really, I cannot thank you enough, the people of Guam cannot thank you enough for all the hard work and sacrifice that you do, most especially giving your time, giving your love, giving your compassion for this most very fundamental purpose of protecting life. And to the people of Guam, I'd like to thank you for your continued support. I'm truly grateful and honored and humbled to have been able to serve you as your public servant. And Merry Christmas and God bless you. It's still Christmas.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Nelson. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, throughout this term, many members of this body have experienced tragedy and loss, more so than probably any other term. You, for all, Madam Speaker, have experienced that, and I can know that. Just about everybody here in this body experienced loss, and which added to the challenge that we had together. And I think that one of the things that we saw is the humanity that this body, that every member of this body possesses, that despite the political, philosophical, the religious differences that we may have in certain things, that in times of trial, in times of trouble, stood by each other, stood with each other. And in that keeping, I may request for a moment of silence. Just very recently, one of our members also experienced the tragic loss of her brother, Vice Speaker Tina Moon Yubarns, and the loss, the sudden loss of her brother, John. So if I can ask just for a moment of silence for all, for John, and for all of our family members that we've lost throughout this term. Thank you. With that, Madam Speaker, with tragedy, with the loss, comes yet the opportunity to be able to prevail, to become resilient, to persist, and to move on. And so with that, I want to say that we face this challenge, we can face more. I'm humbled and honored to again be able to serve in this body next term, but for this body, for the members that I've served with in the Thirty-Six. Thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you for your advice. Thank you for your fight. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for everything that you stood for. You know, in politics, one of the things we learn, what's popular is not always right, and what's right is not always popular. We've all experienced that, and with that, it made us stronger people, it made for stronger laws, it made for a more resilient and a more prosperous island. Thank you for your contributions, and related, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Oh, and last but not least, I too have to thank the staff, the attachés, okay, the ones that had to bear with us and endure us. Without you, ladies and gentlemen, this job cannot be done. Thank you for putting up with me, putting up with us, and being an integral part of what this legislature stands for. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much to my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized for their extension of remarks?
Speaker Trelahi, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity for my colleagues to thank you for allowing me this few moments to reflect on this term, but most especially thank you for allowing me your trust and cooperation to serve you and the people of Guam as Speaker of the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature. It has been my humble honor. In my inaugural address, I committed to strive to embody qualities of those who preceded us, who practiced judiciousness, fairness, and have had the ability to set aside personal motives or agendas to lead this body. And as a lawyer, I hold in high regard the even application of the rule of law, and I committed to upholding the values of fairness and transparency to promoting and preserving the independent but co-equal foundation of this body, to listen to all of the people of Guam, and to ensure this body conducted itself with integrity, not as a rubber stamp or a back door to cater to special interests or specific political interests. This is a type of public service that the people of Guam deserve, and I want to thank all of you, my colleagues, for exhibiting that in your public service. My colleagues, I stand proudly today in affirmation that the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature has delivered so much of what we set out to do. While there will always be room for improvement, the Thirty-Six Guam Legislature encouraged more public participation in the legislative process. We granted waivers of public hearings and granted emergency session only for matters requiring the legislature to act urgently to assist the public due to potentially devastating impacts to our families. We also mandated public access and enhanced notices to boards and commission meetings and actions, and ensured the media had access to session documents such as agendas, floor amendments, and amended bills while we were in session so they could follow along. As of December 20, together, we've introduced 355 bills, passed 151 of them, including the budgets for '22 and '23, and we've overrode one veto. I'm also very proud to say that in the last 24 months, this body has conducted 408 public hearings on bills which average out to 17 hearings per month, many of which were on important yet controversial topics which allowed stakeholders, agencies, and hundreds in our community to voice their concerns. This number includes 60 oversight informational briefings and roundtables on important topics like public health pandemic response, updates from the Department of Education on their use of federal funds and curriculum, the status of return of ancestral land and the proposed new hospital, the reopening of tourism, oversight of procurement issues, including sole source procurement, allegations of the selective enforcement of bench warrants, the deterrence of criminal sexual conduct and other crimes, the protection of our northern aquifer lands and ancient burials, enforcement of mineral extraction restrictions, and improving the protection of health licensing boards. Because of this body's fiscal prudence, the FY22 budget yielded 103.5 million more in general funds than what was adopted in FY22 budget. We were able to reappropriate 63.1 million of those excess funds and provide direct financial assistance to all ratepayers to assist with rising power costs for 12 months and to lift liquid fuel tax resulting in savings for gas consumers. We also reappropriated 25 million in the excess funds to provide direct grants to businesses through the LEAP program while also lowering the BPT from 4% to 3% for 90% of all businesses. This body unanimously acted to distribute immediate relief to the people while the island faced inflation and continues to face inflation, and the economy still recovers from the global pandemic. It appears that FY23 is off to a hopeful start with the latest report showing general revenue exceeded by 19.9 million than what was anticipated in November. So our economy is hopeful, but still fragile as our tourism rebounds and the purchasing power of Guam's residents continue to be reduced while coupled with rising costs of just about everything. In addition to providing urgent and immediate relief through these efforts, the Guam Legislature worked together to pass legislation to urge payment of rise funds, to provide for food assistance, to identify systemic issues for health licensing boards and address accountability and transparency, to support efforts for the new hospital and a new prison, to fund current GMH CIP projects, funding for specialists at the Guam Memorial Hospital, expand and support emergency medical services certifications, and establish paramedics on Guam, reform processes to ensure victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and neglect, to prioritize recruitment in the fields of law enforcement, nursing, medical specialists, and teachers, to update the criminal codes for better enforcement of Guam's criminal laws, to protect our land resources and facilitate affordable housing by ensuring the funding for survey, water, and sewer for CLTC properties and other properties throughout Guam through appropriation and properly evaluated submerged land leases, to discover and address systemic delays in the land use application process, to advocate for those whose land was unjustly taken and seeking for the return of their property, including the expansion of eligibility rules for the Tomorrow Land Trust Commission properties, and bringing transparency to site selection for the medical campus. Expand Guam's economy through tax incentives for drones, captive insurance, elderly housing, youth support, and facilities. To promote sustainability and protect our environment by expanding recycling and zero-waste initiatives, supporting efforts for expanding Guam's power grid for sustainable and lower-cost energy, ensuring consistent funding for Guam EPA, expanded enforcement and increased penalties for violators, advocating for those exposed to nuclear radiation, Agent Orange, and other toxic chemicals. Honoring our Menomco and our heroes by ensuring war claims are paid to eligible applicants who miss the federal application deadline, ensuring our support for veterans and Gold Star families, legal services for the Menomco, and increasing COLA. We prioritize recruitment in the fields of education, social work, nursing, medical specialists, and construction, mandated more reporting on federal funds, made strides on reform of procurement, closed gaps under sole source procurement and small purchases, and ensure training compliance for GovGuam, established a regulatory framework for adoption agencies, ensured consumer protection for public utility ratepayers in disputes, established a functional ethics committee, commission for the government of Guam. Put in additional, on top of our regular appropriations, 10.6 million for village roads and 1.1 million for detox and drug rehabilitation services. This is a short list of many, many more accomplishments, but I want to thank you, my colleagues, who championed so many of these measures during this term and focused on the assistance for the people of Guam and improving our government responses to many of our island's needs. And I would like to recognize and thank personally my colleagues who are leaving the legislature during this term, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Tony Ada, Senator James Moylan, Senator Pito Trelahi, Senator Clint Rigel, and Senator Talina Nelson. I offer a sincere thank you for your many contributions during your time in this legislature, your willingness to sacrifice privacy and time with your families to serve the people of Guam, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors, and I hope to see you soon. I want to, of course, thank all of our central staff and our office staff for their... They know, I know you know, and the public should know, that we could not have done this without you. We could not have succeeded at all without you, and we asked and demanded excellence of you, and you responded beyond excellence. So, Sisus Maasi, to all of you, central staff and all of our office staffs. Individually, we as colleagues have won some and lost some, and some losses are tougher than others, of course, but as a body, we have accomplished many things that were meant to stabilize this government and our economy during challenging times of recovery, and our work will continue. It's my hope that the future legislature will take this roadmap and continue to protect and preserve the authority of this branch as a separate and co-equal branch of government meant to be responsive to ongoing emergent concerns of the people, to ensure checks and balances so that all are treated fairly, and the provisions we set in place will provide that Guam's workers, children, and families will prosper, especially during our time of recovery. I want to wish each of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and to all of the people of Guam, Sisus Maasi, for all of your help to us as a body, for sharing with us your ideas and your thoughts and your concerns, and making sure that, we know you put your families first, and to making sure that we also put your families first. So, Sisus Maasi to all, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Before, I'd just like to announce again that the inauguration for the Thirty-Seven Guam Legislature is at 10:00 a.m. on January 2nd in this hall. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to adjourn today's session, make a motion to adjourn today's session, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion to adjourn, subject to the call of the Speaker, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Sisus Maasi, colleagues.